Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May Hoboken Board of Education meeting. At this point, we've had a few Zoom board meetings. So this is becoming the new normal. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to thank all of our teachers for everything they do for our students in the classroom. And now remotely, as they all transitioned very quickly to teaching in a completely different way. This week was also Nurse Appreciation Day. So thank you to all our nurses. We appreciate everything you do. And on that note, Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance?
Read to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10. Public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on May 2, 2020. If any board member or member of the public in attendance to leave the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on C A T V Channel 77 and Fire on Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district conference. Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the corridor, the quorum of the public process, and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants quietly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. And if use of the devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal interviews.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll?
Ms. Delara.
Here.
Mr. Adam McTooy.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Ms. Connaught.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Carrion.
Here.
Ms. Anglin.
Here.
You have a call.
Great. First, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report, which will be followed by the recognition portion of our meeting. Dr. Johnson?
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to start tonight by congratulating our Students of the Month. During this extremely challenging time, it's really nice to hear positive comments about our students and overall good news. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all of our staff for their dedication to their students and their schools and the district holistically. This is certainly unprecedented time and uncharted territory. And all of the staff members, whether they be classroom teachers, parent professionals, our custodians, our office staff, everybody has jumped in and done everything possible to make this transition as smooth as possible. Along the lines of communication, I'd like to congratulate the entire music department for receiving the designation as a 2020 Best Community for Music Education. This national distinction is well deserved. Our student body is becoming more and more interested in music as a result of our dynamic staff. I've personally seen our marching band compete and our chorus perform. Our middle school band is growing tremendously, and our strings program is blossoming at all elementary schools. All of these descriptors are evident in the local performances by our music department as well as how they perform at state and national competitions. So I congratulate them for this award. I'd also like to congratulate our theater department. So in addition to county and state awards, which gave them a seat at the International Thespians Competition that unfortunately, they will not be able to attend this year. The Hoboken High School Drama Club has been nominated for the following Montclair State University Theater Night Awards. The first is the Award for Pushing the Envelope in Academic Theater. The second is Outstanding Achievement by an Acting Ensemble of a Drama Production. The third is Outstanding Achievement in Contemporary Costume Design. And lastly, the Joanne Fox Veteran Teacher Award. The virtual ceremony held by Montclair State University is set for May 19. So hopefully, we can get the link out for everyone to join and watch. Each day, I send out an edition of the Herald to both parents and staff. My hope is to keep everyone up to date on what's going on in the district and to continually build community within our school districts. Each day, I also send emails out to a handful of staff members just to see how they're doing, and their responses are heartwarming. One accomplishment that I am very proud of this year is that every school in our district has earned the National Distinguished School Award for STEM Learning by Project Lead the Way. Brant, Connors, and Wallace Elementary Schools are project launch schools of distinction. Hoboken Middle School is now a project gateway school of distinction. And Hoboken High School has earned the School of Distinction Award for Biomedical Sciences, Engineering, and Computer Science. Shifting gears, on Monday, May 4, Governor Murphy announced that schools would remain closed for the remainder of the academic year. Within his message, he did not specify plans for end-of-the-year celebrations, summer programming, or for an opening in September. However, guidance for each of these areas are currently being discussed at the state level and through all of the county superintendent roundtables. And more information is going to be shared as the weeks and the months go by. Currently, the Hoboken School District is developing multiple options under various conditions so that we will be ready for anything that comes our way. All districts are required to have a preparedness plan. We, of course, have one, submitted it to the county office and had it approved early on. On May 22 now, we are required to submit a new plan that will include some additional items. So in addition to the first set of requirements, the plan had to include the delivery of virtual and remote instruction with several conditions that had to be met within the plan. There also had to be a method to ensure that students were participating in the work. So each and every day, our principals and our guidance counselors are speaking with our teachers and collecting information as per which students or which families are having difficulty participating in the remote learning or simply have not participated in remote learning for a certain number of days. I want to make it clear to everybody, the Board of Education, community, or public watching, as well as to our staff and principals, that this is a time, more than any other time, to be sympathetic and empathetic to the conditions in which everyone is kind of submerged in. And as a result of that, we are not in a position where we are going to utilize this time to harm or hurt any child as a result of his or her ability or inability to complete work. What we are going to do instead is utilize a code, which is TBD to be determined, which will allow students to have the opportunity to still complete the work, whether it be through this school year or whether it be during the summer months. The goal for us is to ensure that the children have the full experience and have the ability to complete the work in a manner or a timely manner that is most conducive to their families. So as a result of that, we are communicating with a number of families just to make sure we know what their situation is and if there's any way we can help so that they can get through the remote learning during this time. We also had to put in the plan a whole segment on special education and how we were servicing students with disabilities. Early on, we were not permitted to provide related services through telepractice. That has since changed, and we are now able to deliver services through telepractice. We also had to make sure that we had provisions in our plan for English language learners, also for meal distribution, both breakfast and lunch. There was a whole component for facilities. But now we get to the next phase and the new plan that needs to be submitted by the 22nd. That new plan needs to have multiple sets of options for summer programs, any kind of extension activities that we plan to do in the summer, and also end-of-the-year celebrations and moving up ceremonies. So the administration, and myself, and Ms. Rodriguez Gomez and staff members will be looking at all of the options and including them in the plan so that when the governor actually tells us what the situation is and when we can reopen or not reopen, at least we will have a plan in place for just about anything that comes our way. So that's all I have for tonight. And at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez for our Student of the Month recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Now, to honor the Students of the Month for April, who have, of course, done their best to show us their very best. We will begin with the Joseph F. Brant School and Principal Bartlett. And then I would ask Principal Bartlett to then follow suit and introduce Principal Addie from Connors. She will introduce Wallace and so on and so forth. With that, I'm excited to give the floor over to, well, the virtual floor over to Principal Bartlett from Joseph F. Brant.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson and Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. I am extremely pleased tonight to be here with all of you to celebrate and honor our Brant School Student of the Month, Ms. Kimora Miller. Kimora was nominated by her fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Giampa. Kimora has seamlessly transitioned to remote learning and continues to learn every single day with a smile on her face. And as principal, I can tell you that one of the things that I miss the most about being in school is being around the kids. And Kimora has that smile and that personality that she just lights up a room whenever she's in it. And I'm happy to hear that she continues to do that in a virtual capacity with her classmates during her daily Zoom sessions. She has shown her dedication to her studies and her classmates right from the start. We can always count on her to make us laugh and keep us updated on new hairstyles. She gives her dog Bella. That's according to Ms. Giampa. Kimora is a leader in our class and is always willing to help out her teachers and her classmates. I'm happy to report that remote learning has not kept Kimora from her favorite hobbies of cheering and sleeping. So we are very excited that Kimora has just continued to thrive under these circumstances that we're in. I can tell you for a fact that as she grows older, she has leadership qualities written all over her. She has the ability to light up a room. She has that magnetic, engaging personality. And we are extremely proud to honor her as the Brant School Student of the Month, and we wish her the absolute best of luck in anything that she does ever because she's going to just put a smile on everyone's face when she does it. So, Kimora, on behalf of Joseph F. Brant School and the Hoboken Board of Education, congratulations.
Go ahead, say thank you.
Congratulations, Kimora. There's that smile. There it is.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to turn the virtual floor over to the Principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addie.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so excited to congratulate James Bellotti, Connors District Student of the Month. James Bellotti was nominated for the Student of the Month by his fourth-grade homeroom teacher, Ms. Gwen Rodriguez. James is a dedicated and enthusiastic student. He asks thoughtful questions about the topics discussed in class and extends the application of the skills. James is new to the Hoboken School District this year, and he has embraced the Connors, Coalas environment, culture, and mission. And in addition to his dedication as a student throughout the year, he's been an exemplary student during the remote learning. James is always on his Zoom meetings and ready to share stories of his home adventures with his cheerful personality. He has risen to the remote learning challenge by completing assignments regularly and participating in all of the online discussions. James was ecstatic when he was told that he was receiving the honor of District Student of the Month for Connors. When asked how he felt about the award and attending Connor School, James replied, "Awesome. Thank you, everyone, for acknowledging my hard work." James's mother expressed her pride, saying, "James is a sweetheart, a good learner, and he strives to be the best he can. I love him very much." And just as his mom is so proud of him, we adore him, and we are just super, super proud of him. He's really just doing amazing. So we're so proud of you, James. And now, I would like to introduce, now I would like to introduce Mr. Martin Shannon, the Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Taddy. We are here to celebrate Sanaya Pandey, our Wallace School of the Month, our Wallace School Student of the Month for April 2020. Sanaya is a first-grade student in Mrs. Longo's class. She's a very kind student who looks to support her classmates any way she can. Sanaya recognizes when her classmates are working hard and gives them words of encouragement to increase their confidence. Sanaya is empathetic and leads by example. One of her favorite quotes is "Always be kind." Sanaya has many hobbies and interests. In school, her favorite subject is math. Outside of school, Sanaya loves art and gymnastics. Recently, Sanaya started her own YouTube channel. Sanaya hopes one day to become a fashion designer where she can combine her many. And this is a clear example of what we look for in our Student of the Month. She takes pride in her work, and she truly cares for others. I am proud to have Sanaya represent Wallace Elementary School as the April 2020 Student of the Month. Let's hear it for Sanaya. At this time, I'm going to turn over the floor to Ms. Mara, the Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for April is Ms. Lila McDonough. Lila was nominated by two teachers, Mr. Dan Dias and Ms. Painter. And they both referenced her stellar work during remote learning and also shared her overall diligence and her caring nature with all her classmates before remote learning and during remote learning with her Zooms. I learned today that Lila is an amazing gymnast, and her signature move is a round-off back handspring back tuck, which I saw in a video for a mom, which cannot be described in words unless you, you know, can see it. She's also an avid rock climber, so she's trying to keep herself busy right now at home to keep those two things up and keep herself fit. We asked Kendall, Lila's sister, what she thought about Lila. And she said, "Lila is such a kind, smart, and caring person. She is the best sister anyone could ask for, and I'm very proud of her. And I know her entire family is, and we are as well. So congratulations to Lila." I'll now turn it over to Ms. Picapeatra, the Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, Stephen. Congratulations to Hoboken High School's Student of the Month for April, and that's Stephen Hampton. And he's a junior at Hoboken High School. And he's probably one of the most mild-mannered young men that I know. He is completely unassuming, and he really doesn't even know that he is and how fabulous he is. Yes, ma'am? No, ma'am? Can I help you, ma'am? He's a gentleman through and through, except when he's on the football field. There, he is ferocious. And when speaking to his coaches, a very, very dependable teammate, which is Kate. His teachers refer to him as a diamond in the rough. Funny, silly, serious, caring, dedicated, hardworking, focused, and just overall kind human being. He's academically driven, both in school and in remote learning. He has shown great determination to be academically successful. He invests a lot of time into completing quality academic work. He is always taking advantage of our PGP period. He's in the library after school. I see him smiling, so I know I'm hitting it on that, getting it right. He's very, very, very serious about his academics. He also is really, really, he promotes school pride. This can be seen on the football field, in the classroom, and just overall in his clubs and his activities. He's self-motivated. He's passionate. And when he sets his mind to do something, he does it. He really is a stellar young man. I was speaking with Mr. Huggins right a little bit ago, and he said that he had spoken to Stephen today. And he was really excited about getting this honor, as was his mom when I spoke to mom yesterday. She woke him up from a dead sleep evidently to, after my call, to let him know, because I called early. So she woke him out of a dead sleep to let him know. Ms. Hampton, if you're there and you're listening, I want you to know you have done a phenomenal job with Stephen, and you should be proud of the young man you raised. I look forward to his senior year when colleges come knocking on his door because he is going to be fabulous. You've done great, Mom. I miss him, miss him, miss him. Killing me. So congratulations, Stephen. Good job.
Well, thank you to all of our principals. I love the sigh in Stephen, or Mr. Munius. And congratulations to all of our Student of the Month. Keep up the great work. We are so proud of you and hang in there these last five or six weeks of school. So at this time, we are now going to go into the business portion of our meeting. So if there's anyone that would like to drop off the call, you can do so now, or you can stay on and listen in. And we are going to move into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrator's Report tonight?
No, we have not.
Okay. You know, we just met last week for our 2021 budget hearing. And so the board did not meet in committees. Rather, were updated by the superintendent and Business Administrator and reached out around each of the agenda items. So I'm going to turn to each committee chair to see if there's anything that they want to share or point out. With that being said, I will turn to Ms. McGurk for curriculum.
There are no notes for the Curriculum Committee this month.
Okay. Facilities, Ms. Kat Matory.
There are no notes for Facilities this month either.
Finance, Ms. Connaught, anything you wanted to share?
No, there are no notes other than what you see on the agenda, specifically 10.08, the approval of the 2021 budget that you mentioned already.
Okay. Thank you. Governance, Mr. Delatorre.
Yes, I'd like to say that on behalf of the Hoboken Board of Education, we would like to extend our heartfelt congratulations to both Mr. Charlie Colmer and Mrs. Helen Rosoto on their retirement. Combined, they have served our district for 68 years, Mr. Colmer for 33, and Ms. Rosoto for 35. We wish you a happy and healthy retirement. Thank you very much.
Congratulations to both of you. And lastly, we have Ms. Delara on wellness.
Thank you. No, we have no notes on the agenda to report on. Just congratulations to the retirees.
Thank you. I don't have a report either. I already mentioned it was Teacher Appreciation Week. And so hopefully, they're being spoiled by their students with notes and emails and posters and whatever else the kids can do to show their appreciation for them. The only other thing I wanted to point out was on the budget. Last week, we had our budget hearing, and Dr. Johnson and Ms. Good presented the details in a very clear way. The budget incorporates a 2% increase on the local tax levy to cover our state aid cuts, contractual salaries and benefits, and increases to our normal operating cost. In addition, the DOE granted the district a waiver to increase the local tax levy by 7.95% to account for an additional 296 K-12 students next year. And lastly, Mr. Carrion asked a good question. Is this the maximum that we can take, even if our enrollment is above 296 students? And the answer was yes for this budget cycle. And at this time, I think we are well above the 296 students. So, you know, while this increase is high, it's a necessity given the growing and developing Hoboken that we're living in right now. And in turn, you know, the extraordinary increase in students enrolled within the Hoboken Public School District. So I just wanted to comment on the budget. So moving on, I guess, Ms. Good, do we have any public comments on agenda items?
No.
Okay. Can we have the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Good.
Ms. Kat Matory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connaught?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Ms. Anglin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Yes, Ms. Roseanne Versace.
Hey, Ms. Versace.
Hi, everybody. I should be able to get through this one tonight without crying. So I wanted to first say thank you and congratulations to the music department, the theater department, all the students of the month. Stephen was my student in first grade, so I was very proud of him and happy to see that he was selected. And also, Happy National Nurses Week and Teacher Appreciation Week. I am honored and privileged to be part of such a great group of staff members. I did want to congratulate Charlie Colmer, one of our esteemed custodians. I've known Charlie a long time, and I wish him a happy and healthy retirement. And of course, just wanted to say a few words about Nurse Helen. Helen Rosato, she, I spoke to her a little earlier. 35 years and eight months, she said. She's been with the district. She started working in a hospital, and it's kind of a funny story, so I'll tell it really quickly. Her mother saw an ad in the Jersey Journal for a school nurse in Hoboken. She said, "Helen came home from work. Her mother said, 'I typed your resume. Why don't you go bring this down to the Board of Vet Office?'" And as they say, the rest is history. She's mostly spent her career at Wallace, and then she did a five-year stint, kind of going back and forth between Wallace and Connors. But we all know her and love her at Wallace, and she really is the epitome of a school nurse. Kind, compassionate, caring, loving. If I was an injured child, she's the person I would want to take care of me. And she takes care of the young and the old, older, I should say, in the school system, if someone's not feeling well. So we're sorry to see her go, but we're very happy for her. She deserves a restful and enjoyable retirement. And we just are very grateful that she's been part of our community for 35 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let's give them both a round of thanks for their service. Yeah, let's give them both a round of applause for their years of service. Congratulations to both of them. And with that, that concludes our meeting. Oh, Mel, Ms. Takarian.
Yes, I wanted to just maybe make a quick comment. You know, between this meeting and last meeting and the four retirements that were announced, I'm really just awed by these amazing individuals who have given so much to our district. Right, last time when we met, we learned about Josephine Frank Mazzone, each serving roughly 40 years as teachers in our district. And then Mr. Colmer, 33 years, and Nurse Helen, 35 years. Those are tremendous careers for anyone to spend in one place, and we are so lucky to have had them, you know, taking care of our district and our children for such a long time. So just thank you and good luck and happiness in everything in their retirement. It is, you know, bittersweet to be saying goodbye to them under these circumstances where they can't be celebrated more officially and formally, but I know that they've certainly more than earned the retirements that they are going into. So congratulations to all of them. I'm sure they'll each be missed. And also, just quick recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, that's something I've thought about a lot this week in terms of the teachers that my daughter has had in her time at, in the Hoboken Schools and from pre-K to her time now through fourth grade, and really just how lucky we are to have had wonderful teachers, whether it was classroom teachers or specials teachers or the teachers that are doing extracurriculars or passport. We really are so lucky to have wonderful teachers in our district and want to echo what Dr. Johnson said earlier about how they have really pivoted in this amazing way during this time and have helped our children be successful in our difficult circumstances. So thank you to all the teachers out there.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to say or comment on? Yep. All right. Well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.